Hello, good evening and welcome to tonight's Tuesday, October 8th, 2024 Board of Education Planning Meeting here at the North Babylon High School. If we can please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance? Okay, so just call the meeting to order. We'll do a little roll call.
Mr. Lucetti?
Here.
Mrs. Rowland?
Here.
Mrs. Rivers?
Yeah.
Mrs. Tedesco?
Yeah.
Mr. Myers?
Yeah.
Dr. Barnett?
Yeah.
Mr. Scheid?
Yeah.
Okay, and welcome again. We're just gonna, and if anybody who saw the agenda, we're just gonna skip two. We're gonna do all the action items and then we'll go back to the presentation and the superintendent report. So we're gonna skip to three. So Personnel Action Report Superintendent School Recommends the Board Approved Personnel Actions Reported Listed in Schedules A, B, and C, dated October 8th. I need a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rowland, second. Second. Mr. Myers, all in favor? Aye. Any abstention? Motion carries. We have a field trip request for the cross-country invitational. Any motion? Motion, Mr. Scheid, second. Second, Ms. Tedesco, all in favor? Aye. Any abstention? Motion carries. We have Education Law Recommend the Board Approve the Following Resolution Listed below as more fully discussed and in executive session. So that's a motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Rowland, second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Rivers, all in favor? Aye. There's also Law 913. Recommend the Board Approve the Following Resolution as more fully discussed in executive session. That's motion?
Motion.
Motion, Ms. Tedesco, second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Rowland, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we're just gonna go back. The board discussion items will be based on the presentation tonight, so we're just gonna go. I just wanna throw, you know, many of us have family and friends and a lot of people from New York misplaced down there in Florida and they've been going through some stuff and they have another one coming their way, so just keep our prayers and thoughts for everyone down in that area and as the hurricane comes through, you know, not good times for them, so. With further ado, we're gonna go over to Dr. Graham for a presentation, I think with Ms. Gillen.
Yeah, we're gonna have Ms. Gillen come to the podium.
We can go out front if we want.
Rose is gonna lower the screen and I think the board can move to the seats. And as Ms. Gillen is preparing and we're waiting for the screen, I just wanted to acknowledge many of our administrators, our curriculum coordinators, curriculum directors here this evening. I know that they had great contributions to the presentation this evening, so thank you for being here as well. And I'm sure Kim's gonna mention that again as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. Rose, for setting up the presentation. So, good evening and, oop, nope. What happened to us there, Mr. Rose? All right, there we go. So thank you. This evening, we have a lot of information and data that we're presenting to you tonight. And as Dr. Graham said, I appreciate the curriculum team being here this evening to be here to answer questions and provide support as a lot of this work is work that they lead with us. So tonight, we're going to be looking at our student achievement from the 2023-24 school year. And we have, we're gonna look at some of our enrollment and demographics data, talk a little bit about chronic absenteeism. We're gonna look at some elementary data and some secondary data, and then some information about the graduating class of 2024. So along the way, if there's something you want me to stop and answer a question, of course, you know, let me know. Or of course, at the end, you know, there'll be opportunity for you to answer, ask any questions and of course, answer anything that you'd like. So we're gonna start with looking at some of the enrollment and demographics data. So in looking at our district, and you'll see when you're looking at some of this enrollment data, some of the numbers, you're like, wait, here it looks a little different than this. A lot of it is bed day data and current day data, so sometimes the numbers, you know, because we have such a fluid enrollment back and forth. But what we wanted to show you here was this idea of where we've been in the last 10 years as far as our enrollment is concerned. And one of the interesting things that I see here is the fact that our enrollment bubble right now seems to be at our high school. In 2014, we had 380 kids in the 12th grade. Last year's class of 2024 had 437. So we definitely, that's where our bubble is right now, but if you look at our kindergarten, we only had 289 students in our kindergarten last year in 2024, and it's about a similar number this year. So we're definitely seeing some trend. But overall, our K-12 enrollment in the last 10 years has gone down a little bit. But we're definitely, right now, our largest enrollment numbers are seen at the high school. Whoops. It's very sensitive. And then kind of looking at the demographics of this as well, what you'll see in the 2023-24 school year, we had 10% of our student population were classified as Ls. And 16.8% of our student population are classified as students with disabilities. And 50.8% of our students are considered to be economically disadvantaged. So then taking a look at that, holy cow, this is really sensitive, at that, on a graph, you'll see our student enrollment. Then the top line that is going through is showing you the economically disadvantaged students. So you can see from 2014 to 2024, we definitely have had an increase in the number of students that are identified. And we say economically disadvantaged, those are students who have enrolled in free and reduced lunch. You'll also see that we've had an increase in the number of classified students. But really look at that number of increase of Ls, even though the Ls are that last line down there, we have, you know, 168 more Ls since 2020 to where we had in 2024. So we definitely are seeing that of our new enrollments that are coming in, a higher percentage of the students coming in, identifying, being identified and tested as ENL students. And that's significant when we talk about some of our goals and some of the work that we're doing to meet the needs of these subgroups. Because really, when we're looking at where are we going to take ourselves to the next level and move ourselves student achievement-wise, we as a curriculum team have recognized that if we don't really meet the unique needs of these three groups in particular, then we're not going to be able to move the entire district. There are definitely unique needs of each of these groups. Of our economically disadvantaged students, our students with disabilities, as well as our students who are Ls. And helping our classroom teachers meet the needs of each of those students to make sure that they're getting the education that they deserve along the way is really something that is paramount for us. Then looking at our demographics from the 2023-24 school year, you'll see, I have this broken down in two different ways. One by race, and then when you look at the column over, or the chart over to the right, it breaks that ethnicity because Latino is not, Hispanic is not an ethnicity, but what I wanted to show you, is an ethnicity, not a race, that 38.8% of our students have identified themselves of Hispanic or of Latino descent. So that actually brings down our white, non-Hispanic number from white to being 52% to really white, non-Hispanic being 25% of our student body. And that is definitely a shift that we've seen in the last 10 years as well. Our student body is by far much more diverse now than it has been over the last couple of years and has really been the crux of a lot of the work that we've done with our SEL and cultural proficiency work to make sure that all students see themselves represented in our curriculum and in our school and feel that this is a safe place for them to be and thrive. So we have 24 different languages spoken in North Babylon schools. And you'll see that's just like a chart representing just the different languages that are spoken in among our students, 75% of that being Spanish. But when looking at our Ls, we actually have 11 primary languages, 11 languages that are considered where our Ls are, their home language is something other than English. But when we're talking just about our North Babylon student body, we have 24 different languages being spoken in our households across the district. Everything from Polish and Urdu and Arabic Creole, the Creole number you see is growing, Turkish, Haitian, like I said, and Polish. Right? We have all sorts of different languages being spoken, which is really neat when you see the kids really, you know, around the hall sharing their cultures. Chronic absenteeism is something that the state really started collecting data for in the last, some really since COVID and looking at getting kids back to school after COVID in the 2021 school year. And what are some of the hurdles with that, especially when looking at academic success? So what I'm showing you here is the data that was reported back, we reported to the state and the state reported back to us. So looking at our chronic absenteeism from 2021 to 2024, the state defines chronic absenteeism as a student missing 10% or more of the days that they're enrolled. So at elementary, you'll see we have, for this data set, the group is grades one through eight is what the state is looking at as far as elementary, middle, chronic absenteeism. So our student enrollment for this data point was 2,675 students. And we had 16% of those students, 16.6% of the students considered to be chronically absent in the 2024 school year. That represents 445 students. When looking at secondary, which the state's defining for this particular dataset is grades nine through 12, we had 1,632 students in this dataset and we had 374 students considered to be chronically absent, which represents 22.9% of our high school population. But the reason why I wanted to show it to you this way is that we actually are tackling the chronic absenteeism issue and we've seen the results of that as, last year, a little bit of a decline, especially at the elementary and middle level with chronic absenteeism. And that's the hard work of our teachers, our administrators, our guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists, all working together to figure out the why behind why kids are not coming to school and working with families and getting kids back to school and getting here regularly and making sure they understand the importance of achievement and success comes with being here prepared and ready every single day. Then looking at this particular chart, I wanted to show you here, actually the three different categories that the state is looking at when reporting absenteeism. We have chronic absenteeism, like I said, with chronically absent being 10% or more. At risk of being chronically absent, I have that defined down there as being, you know, representing 5.9 to really 10% of the days enrolled would be at risk for being chronically absent. And then the last group being, you know, 5% of the last days absent from school. So again, seeing that we are definitely decreasing the number of students that are chronically absent and we're getting kids back to school as those numbers over the last couple of years are declining on the chronic absenteeism from K through 12. But again, that's been a lot of hard work and we know there's a lot of hard work that still needs to go into that as we're still really tackling a lot of mental health challenges and social emotional challenges of some of our students and getting them back here regularly and understanding the importance of being in school five days a week, all day long. All right, so with that, before I jump into the elementary data, any questions about our demographics or enrollment data and what we're reporting to the state for absenteeism? Yeah? Sure. So some of the, some of the reasons for chronic absenteeism, quite honestly, we, in the early years of 2020, when I say early years, I mean 2021, really the 21, 22 school year, is that we had seen this across the state when speaking to colleagues in all of our different meetings, that students had gotten into the pattern of staying home. And so coming back to school was not, you know, just weren't ready to get back to school. Definitely, we had also seen two kids who had some fear of coming to school, like we said to them, if you've got, you know, fever, don't come to school. So we definitely saw that. COVID still played a role in it. But definitely, we, nothing that I would say would be really truly identified as school phobia or, but just this kind of not understanding the importance of being here every day, some mental health issues for sure. We also had some students that just socially, emotionally, just not feeling as if this was the place they wanted to be in trying to get them back here and understanding that the best place to be is here with us every day in front of a teacher and not behind a computer screen. Yep, so guidance, it's reach out, you know, so we have, at the secondary level, where teachers are reaching out to administration when they're noticing an issue, administration reaching out to teachers when they're issued, and it's contacting families on a regular basis, guidance counselors, social workers, psychologists intervening. We've done some home visits on occasion when we need to. It's Dan Rose also working, you know, as our registrar, working with families to make sure they understand the, some of the legal ramifications behind, you know, not sending their children regularly to school and doing that hard work. And quite honestly, I have to say, the middle school and high school administration have done a really nice job in trying to put some programs in place and procedures in place to make sure kids are not falling through the cracks and we're catching them before they get to the chronic absenteeism rate and catching them when they hit that 5% mark or before they get there, before it becomes an issue, and getting the kids early and often. And when I say that, early and hitting them in middle school and in the upper elementary grades and making sure that we're helping them with the good practices of being here every day. So getting a little more challenging when kids get to be their junior and senior year, so really trying to catch them at the middle level before they get here to the high school. Heather, you had a question? Yeah? So it truly is an e-school report that we pull out based on students who are absent the entire day or a majority of their day. So it is student enrollment versus numbers of days or, yeah, number of days absent.
So it's not, so the percentage is?
It is the percentage of, so the 6.6% represent, I'm sorry, 16.6% represent this, that 16.6% of the students in grades one through eight are considered to be chronically absent from school so that they have missed 10% or more of the days enrolled. Yep, yep, yep.
So for example, so the students enrolled in secondary, it's 1632, and then I took the 374 that are chronically absent, and I think my simple math, it would come out to 2.9.
It should, yeah.
But when I do elementary, and I do the 445 into the 267, I come up with 10, but you're saying there's something in student data?
Actually, if you're comparing this from the presentation I had sent home on Wednesday, you'll notice that the student chronically absent number is a different number. What we have realized is that when we transpose the numbers over from the chart to the presentation, that number was lower on your original presentation. And so if you took that original number, that was 10%. Yep, and so when we went back and double-checked the numbers, we're like, oh, something's not right. And we, I went back and repulled the report to make sure it was accurate. Okay? That's what I figured, yep. Absolutely, yeah, no, absolutely. And you, and that's why there's so many different data points and so many different sources. That's why, like I said to you, like, this is a data that we pull and we send and then we look at again. So some of the data points you'll see, and I'll show you a little later, is where the state is reporting it back to us in comparison to what we pull out of e-school, once they pull all the different data points together. So sometimes it's a little different, yeah. We have, we now have free lunch for all, so that, remember though, last year, we did not get free lunch for all until like November, December. So most of our applications were in. So there is definitely a little, not concern, but just like, now that we have free lunch for all, we are not probably getting the same number of applications in as we had before. And Frank and I are gonna, you know, we're working with Danica and I've been working with Steve Dumbo. In particular, with guidance counselors, making sure that high school students in particular understand that turning in that free and reduced lunch application is not just about the free lunch, but the other benefits they can get with college applications, AP exam reduction, I mean, making sure we're educating parents the importance of turning that in. So they're definitely, I don't, we're not gonna see it in this year's number, but we may see an impact of that over the next, next couple of years as we remain a free school, free lunch for all school. Okay, sure. I would tell you that, off the top of my head, I could not, but I will tell you that we definitely use that as a, one of our data points when identifying students for at-risk. When we will look at an at-risk students as far as their academics, one of the data points we then would look at is how often are they coming to school? And is, to try to find the reason why behind their lack of success academically. But I can, we can, I can pull some old reports so you see what the attendance will bite prior to. Okay, sure. All right, so now let's talk about elementary. So when looking at the elementary data, let me just write that down, pre-COVID. We are looking at STAR data. So the first few numbers that I'm showing you here are the elementary early literacy rate. And remember that there are three different exams when it comes to STAR. There's early literacy that students take before they be, they move over to the reading and math exams. So we don't, we test our pre-K in winter and in spring. And this is based on the 40th PR. And the percentile rank is based on this idea of, when we say 40 PR, the student is performing better than 40% of the students in the grade who are tested in the same window at that time. And if you remember, you know, we've discussed before, the reason why the 40 PR was selected was the recommendation from Renaissance and really as an idea of not looking at whether or not students are reading on grade level, but how are they doing in comparison of their peers to help us identify whether or not they are in need of academic intervention support. Because if you are performing less than 50% of your peers, then we are looking at the fact that you are in need perhaps of academic intervention. So looking at the early literacy, that's what this is based on, is the 40 PR. You'll see that our pre-K students in the winter, 58% of them were performing at the 40 PR. So they were performing better than 40% of their peers nationwide, and by spring, 81%. That is definitely a decrease by 9% over the cohort the year before. But what I want to point out is that this pre-K cohort of the 2023-24 school year came in lower and academically weaker than the pre-K the year before. So the pre-K the year before came in at like 67% in the winter and went to over 90. This group came in lower, so there was a same percentage of growth from fall, from winter to spring. But we, you know, definitely would like to see that at over 90%. Looking at the K and 1, you'll see that the, the K was 40, 47%, we're hitting it in the fall and 71% in the spring. And then I want to point out with the grade 1, what's interesting on that data point, because you're like, wait a second, right? How could they be doing so well in K and not so well in 1? Is that the important part in that is that we want our first graders not to be taking early literacy. We want them to be taking the reading assessment. Yes? 52% of the students, of the first graders who tuck the early literacy exam. Yep, so in looking at that, so I can actually give you that number. So in the fall, 251 first graders tuck the early literacy exam. That is what made up that 51, that 55%. In the spring, 161 of the first graders tuck the early literacy exam, meaning then 90 students should have then moved on to the reading. Now I'm gonna show you, it's actually gonna be 87 because in between, what I looked at was three students left the district in between. All right, but we had, you know, according to this, there are 90 less students taking the early literacy in the spring. So that 52% are then of the 52% of the students that are still in early literacy. So they're the, representing the weaker readers of the first grade, if that makes sense. Okay? So they were performing about at the same as all of the first graders in the fall. So then looking at that then for the first grade, and this one looks at the elementary reading from fall to spring for grades one through five. As I said, in the fall for first grade, when it came to the reading, we had 56 students tuck the exam, the reading exam in the fall, and then we had 143 students take it in the spring. So that was an increase of 87 students that went over. So the nice part of that, of that is that not only did we have more students taking the exam, but they, they did well. They were outperforming their district benchmark on that. We definitely are recognizing that we're having some concerns about grades three, four, and five that Jackie and I are on, and we have some plans that you'll see later on about how we're working on that. And I like to hope that the growth that we're seeing in grades one and two and three has a lot to do with our new foundations integration and program in there. So the other thing I want to point out before I walk at the math data, is that STAR recognized, Renaissance has recognized that they needed to re-norm their assessments, that there was an impact for sure of learning loss by COVID. And this year, they have re-normed nationwide, they've re-normed all of the assessments. And we, as when we did our initial run of the fall assessment, are seeing that with the re-norming, that our students are performing at a higher level than before. So one of the things that we have done, that, you know, Jackie, obviously, Kane is taking the lead at the elementary for our STAR assessment. CJ is taking the lead on our secondary reading and Amy on our secondary math. And we together had decided to add the 50th percentile as per the request on our reports for staff. So the 50th percentile mark is on our reports, and we, but we kept the 40th percentile because we were unsure at how, what was gonna be the impact of this re-norming. And we wanted to make sure we didn't, we didn't over-identify kids in need of academic intervention services. We also wanted to make sure we did a great job in educating our staff for the shift and why we wanted to make the shift in the aspirational goals that we have set. So we have added the 50th PR on there. And when Jackie and I did a quick look at some of that data, like I said the other day, we saw that the, our students came in close to, and I think I had shared some of that in the original version of the presentation, to where we were performing on the 40th percentile, the students are now hitting the 50th percentile. So the re-norming for us definitely did something, we said is that, hey, our students are perform, we think are performing better than what they're showing on this assessment. So we then now have to take some hard looks at our identification of students in need of academic intervention and make sure that we are servicing the students that need the academic intervention and are getting the appropriate interventions along the way from pre-K through 12th grade. And so we've been working on some of those plans with the re-norming. Yeah? Absolutely, yep. Sure, so our philosophy for the most part, when it had, we don't pull out in pre-K. But we do start looking at, students enter our MTSS, our RTI model in kindergarten when they score. We look at multiple data points. So in addition to this, we're looking at their FMP, we're looking at their dial scores, we're looking at informal assessments or formative assessments that teachers are doing in classrooms and having meetings, or the elementary principals are meeting with our teams to identify kids. Our rule of thumb when it comes to kindergarten is really not to pull out in kindergarten in the fall. But instead, we have teachers pushing in, in most cases, to be able to support students in the classroom. Because sometimes we're realizing that the need for intervention has to do with the fact that it's not necessarily a reading deficiency yet. It's just that they have not come to school up to this point. And by pulling them out, what we were finding with pulling out is that they were actually going back past their classmates, where really what we needed was for them to maybe just help with the regulation and school training, so to say. You know, getting into the regular routines and habits and good reading habits and strategies at the K. So you'll start seeing kids being pulled out for services usually after the winter screener in kindergarten. And we pull out for tier two and tier three services, meaning that they are scoring in the yellow or the red on STAR. And like I said, in additional data points where they're reading well below their peers. And then from there, we're identifying based on what the reports are telling us where the deficiency is. And the reading groups are then providing the interventions based on where the child's deficiency is. So it could be LLI, it could be a Wilson group, it could be, you know, a Wilson Just Words group, maybe not the full Wilson. Definitely not in K, where we really putting kids into that intensive type of Wilson training, but perhaps a Just Words. It could be Seeing Stars, it could be a Linda Mubell type of intervention that's in there. But depending on what we're identifying the weakness is, would determine then what type of intervention. And that is done through those data meetings that are done with the principals. And in those meetings, where RTI meetings include usually a psychologist of reading and a math specialist, a social worker perhaps if needed, because it may not be, we may be identifying there are other issues to the student's academic success that are external. It may not be necessarily, it could be exposure, it could be issues at home, poverty. It may not be necessarily, it could be exposure, it could be issues at home, poverty, ENL status that we need to look at, so sometimes an ENL teacher may be involved. And then we develop, based on the data, the, the principals work with the team to develop the right intervention. That how we're going to collect that data for the intervention, how often the child is going to be polled from the intervention, what will be done by the interventionist, and what will be done by the classroom teacher. And with the idea of reviewing that child after 10 weeks again, after we've had several tries with the intervention. And what's nice with the STAR assessment is that we do have the three windows where we benchmark. But we encourage, and what STAR's rule is, is that after 10 sessions or 10 hours of intervention, you should assess the, the child again to see if that intervention is working. And if that intervention isn't working, then we know we need to go back to the drawing board and meet before that 10-week mark to see, do we need to adjust and find and pinpoint another reason why the child is not growing and, and try a different type of intervention. Yep, so that is something that Jackie will be adding to the e-School portal this year and will be going out as part of the report cards. Up to this point, we have not openly distributed, and we had discussed that last year. But a lot of teachers during parent-teacher conferences will share some of the information of the STAR reports. And of course, always at parent request, we have sent several reports home. It's a parent report. Parent report. We're working, we're working on being able to integrate that in. That was part of the beauty of Jackie Kane being Jackie Kane, is being not only, you know, great at elementary, but her technology background has been able to help us figure out how to do some of this work as well to get that up on Portal. Yeah, so that, that is, is a, is a challenge for sure. But in looking at our reading interventionists, the only area right now that we don't have a broad number of teachers or be actually Wilson certified. We have people who are Wilson Just Words trained, but the actual Wilson certification is a rigorous certification. And we have just a few teachers on staff that, that have that certification. But that is a very intensive reading intervention that often comes after trying different types of, of interventions before we get to Wilson. It's usually someone who's been identified as, as dyslexic or having some real other issues. And there's a special assessment that you actually have to give, you should give a student before identifying them to receive Wilson, it's called the WISD, to see whether or not Wilson is the appropriate intervention for them. Because that Wilson program is looking at very specific things for, for a child. And I have, you know, I, many people know, I sing the praises of Wilson because my child went from, my personal child went from a non-reader to a reader on Wilson. But I also knew she, that was after multiple tries of, of different interventions. And then her dyslexia diagnosis being that this was the appropriate intervention for her. It's not always, you know, we have to figure out what is the appropriate intervention based on what is the reading, just, reading, I don't want to say disability, because it's not, the reading intervention that's needed to, to bridge the gap. No, it, Wilson will not allow you to do that. Wilson, you have the Wilson company, it's, it's a, and it's, and it's very difficult. It's multiple levels of, of training that you need. Teachers need to do it outside of the school day. The, the student that they need to be able to use to, for their training cannot be a student who is on their class roster, and they can't service that child during the school day. And those are the things that are dictated by the company and, and the, and the service, not something by us. So we have one teacher in particular who probably right now is in three different buildings. But I have to tell you, in the past, she has been in five different buildings providing Wilson training, Wilson services to students from elementary, middle, and high school. She's traveled all over the district to be able to, to do that. We have, we've been trying to work with the company to say, you know, can we offer people in-service credit? Can we do different things? And, you know, it's a conversation Lori and I actually were having the other day, you know, when I was showing Lori that we have the, a full list of all the, all of our reading and, and special education teachers and our interventionists and what trainings we've sent them to, from Hagerty to Linda Mubell to, and making sure that we have in every building someone that has all, all of those different trainings. But the Wilson one is one where we just, we, it's, needs a motivated teacher who wants to do it outside of their school day to do that. And that sometimes is the challenge in getting Wilson-certified people. But it's definitely something when we look at resumes for new reading teachers. If I can find someone that has that on their, on their resume, I'm grabbing them for an interview as fast as we can. We have. Yeah, students that have needed Wilson services and we have not had enough staff in-house to do through the special education world, if they've been identified as special ed student, we brought in outside people in the past. We definitely have. Right, so now looking at the math numbers, you'll see that our student, students meeting, the 40th PR in math is a little bit higher than what we've seen in, in our reading. And we attribute both the increase in our math and in our reading, quite honestly, to some of the shifts we've made in our delivery of instruction with really focusing on small group instruction, hands-on instruction. Amy, you know, bringing in the first in math really has kind of put a refocus at the elementary in many ways and the excitement for math. We were particularly pleased to see, because we were concerned with second grade in the fall when we saw that number come in. So we were particularly pleased to see that by the spring, 70% of our second graders were now meeting that 40 PR. So we, we really have been trying to do a lot of work as well. At the end of last year, we also brought in, finally, our teacher-created elementary math end-of-year assessment was created and, and distributed for the first time. And students took that for the first time as an additional data point. Because what we noticed for reading is there, there are multiple data points that are out there, multiple programs or data points, and we didn't have as many data points for our math. So we created our own in-house that was teacher-created with the work of Amy Michaelopoulos and Celeste Archer leading that committee to develop these assessments. And now, of course, Jackie has taken it over. And it was a pre-assessment at the beginning of this year to use as a benchmark for us, as another data point to see where our kids are at. So we're, we're still looking to develop new things. What I wanted to show you here with this consolidated progress report was the idea that, of growth. In that, in looking at this, what this is showing you is, is in, at the end of the 22-23 school year, we had at the elementary, 428 elementary students that were meeting our benchmark. In the spring, in the, I'm sorry, in the spring of 23-24, we had 592 students. So just kind of a point to show you that the work that we're doing is that at the end of the 23-24 school year, we have more students that are, are meeting or exceeding our district benchmark, the same for math as well. In the 23-23, 22-23 school year, 541 elementary students were meeting or exceeding our benchmark. And by the end of the 23-24 school year, it's 790 students. So again, that's a lot of the hard work of, of this team sitting over here beside us, as well as our teachers, really embracing some of the changes that we're trying to make in how we're delivering our elementary instruction and a lot of the professional development that we've been providing. So we hope that will continue to grow. Any questions, any other questions on the STAR assessment before I move on to the state assessment data? Great. So first thing I want to share with the state assessment data is our, our state assessment participation. Because as we know, this is not a data point we often spend a lot of time discussing because of the number of students that are actually taking the assessment. So this slide is showing you our math and ELA assessment participation from 2019 to 2024. And so it will show you the tested and not-tested numbers. So as you'll see, we had really, in 2024, in math, grades 3 through 5, 58.7% of our students actually taking the assessment. In grade 6 through 8, you'll see in math that we had 27.4% of our students taking the math assessment. 3 through 5, ELA in 2024, 56%, 56.3% of our students taking the assessment. And then again, for ELA, grade 6 through 8, again, only 29% of our students taking the assessment. So although we're seeing a slight increase in the number of students taking the assessments, the number still represents a very small portion of our students. And therefore, a lot of times, we struggle with using this as a data point. But do want to point out that the state uses this as a data point often. And we are on a few of the watch lists for, for us, based on, and the data pool being very small, based on our student performance on these assessments, which this slide shows you. This slide shows you, the top left corner shows you the 2024 ELA and math student proficiency. And the ELA being the lighter color, the math being the darker color for each grade. I do want to point out, you'll notice here that there are no students that are on a level 3 or 4 for 8th grade. If you remember, like I said, there was only, you know, this 27% of the students in the middle school actually taking that assessment. And then at the top of that, if you are a student who is in the accelerated algebra program, you are not taking that assessment as well. So that number is so small and, and it's, again, our highest achieving students aren't even a part of that data set because they're taking the algebra regions. The bottom slide shows you what our proficiency for 3 and 4 looks like combined over the, the last three years. So you can see that we definitely are seeing, you know, an increase in, in our ELA proficiency for students in, you know, in, on levels 3 and 4 overall. But again, such a small, small data pool. So with that data, you know, Jackie and I have spent a lot of time with the elementary principals and speaking with the teachers about where should our focus be to be able to move us to the next level. And you'll see at the top are the two main areas of focus, which is personalized learning and improve student outcomes by systematic analysis of data from assessment, student performance, and student observation as well. This approach will help identify the gap of understanding and enhance instructional strategies and improvement student outcomes. And how are we going to do that? It's broken into three separate categories. Student, small group instruction, standard-based grading, which also comes with the colossal task of revising our elementary report card and really spending a lot of time in helping teachers at the elementary understand the difference in, in grading and going to a standard-based grading. And as well as our readers and writers workshop model. These are things that we've been working on over the last couple of years that were started and, and we're continuing that work and trying to drill down a little bit more. Jackie's spending a lot of time working on data and data and helping teachers really understand how to use the data to inform instruction, in particularly working with our academic intervention specialists and how they use it for their own student groups, and how can they support classroom teachers to be able to do that in a full-group instruction. So this is our focus for 24-25 that Jackie is well swaying, working on and, and working hard on in getting our teachers, teachers going. Any other questions about elementary before I move on to secondary? Yes? Yeah, absolutely. Yep, foundations, yep. So the question was, in addition to the readers and writers workshop model, will we still be working on foundations? Absolutely. In fact, one of the things that Jackie just put into place was for all of our brand-new teachers to the district and as well as our ENL teachers to receive foundations training, to make sure that our brand-new teachers are trained at the same level as our classroom teachers are. And one of the data points that we were looking at was, in looking at the number of students receiving academic intervention services and reading, I was concerned about the number of Ls that receiving reading services and, and we're helping, we realized we maybe needed to help our teachers understand the difference between what is a language issue and what is a reading issue, and making sure that our ENL teachers can support the foundations work as they're working on, on language skills. Absolutely. Absolutely, yeah, the foundations absolutely is another data point that we're using in the classroom to inform our instruction. Absolutely, and, and the biggest point being is that as, as much as we're presenting the STAR data, we, again, we use that as a data point, because it is nationally normed and it, it is like the most reliable part of data. But we look at children as being puzzles and that we want to make sure that we're looking at multiple data points at multiple times to be able to figure out what is the solution for that particular child in front of us right now. So, yes. All right. So looking on to the secondary data, the first data set that I'm going to show you on Regents' exams are first-time test takers. And what that means when we present this is, is these, this are, these are the students that are enrolled in the class and then taking the Regents' exam right after they're enrolled in the class. Obviously, our ELA 11 are taking it in January. But the idea being is, what is the impact of our instruction this year on student achievement? And this data is pulled right from internally on our e-School information. So in looking at that, our checkpoint exams, I'm showing you 23-24 data to kind of see the comparison between the two. Checkpoint A given in, in the 8th grade as a part of the opportunity to receive their high school credit. And of course, we have Spanish and Italian. And you'll see in every area, we had an increase in our passing rate. And in addition, in other areas, we'll see some increase in our mastery rate, which we were, we were pleased about. So that checkpoint B exam also includes not only our high school students that are taking checkpoint B, but our accelerated, our dual-language students that were a part of our accelerated language. Last year was the first year, they took the checkpoint B as a part of 8th grade, and 100% of those students passed that exam, which may have had a little bit in helping our checkpoint B numbers go up a little bit. But our, our high school students and teachers are doing a really nice job as well. The checkpoint, I had, it's, so for 8th grade, it's the entire 8th grade, it was 260, I had that data point today and I didn't print it out for me tonight. It was 268, I believe, total students took that exam. And then the 47 students took the Italian. We definitely are noticing that our Italian numbers are, enrollment is decreasing a little bit. And that's one of the things Nick Pay is looking at and exploring, you know, is, is, do students still want to take Italian? Or is there another language that they're, they're interested in? But I'm going to tell you again, one of the biggest challenges to us, and I see Barbara looking at me as I say it, like, please, Kim, don't do this, is that we, it is really difficult to find a language teacher in any of these languages. So as much as there may be an interest in French, which there is, finding a French-certified teacher is, is a challenge. So right now, we're gathering some data on, you know, where, what language do students want to take? And is it sustainable to build a program around it? But to, right, can, I don't know if you were able to pull up my data from today, 260? 263, first minute. So it was pretty close. Right, and so you'll notice the checkpoint B numbers tend to come down just a little bit. But with the institution of our language program earlier and more consistent, we're finding more students sticking through language through the checkpoint B and beyond. But definitely, we're seeing a decrease in the Italian. All right, whoops. Our ELA Regents, this past year, we had 84.8% of our students passing the ELA Regents. We had a slight increase in our mastery rate at 46.7%. One of the things that Steve Dombow and, and Nick Pay and CJ Schultz and I have been working on is this idea of, when do we put in our ENL students to 11th grade? Should we be putting them in 11th grade ELA even though cohort-wise, they're, they're 11th graders? Or should we be placing them perhaps in other ELA classes? Not to escape this data point, but is it appropriate, you know, to put them there? When maybe we should be looking at alternative ELA classes for them and give them a little more support before we, we put them in front of the ELA Regents in January. Looking at our algebra, I have this slide broken down into two categories, the high school algebra and the 8th grade algebra. So you'll see that our high school algebra passing rate, again, these are students sitting in the class and taking the exam at the end of the year. We had 63% of our algebra students at the high school passing the exam. And we had 99% of our 8th grade algebra students passing the exam with an increase however, though, of our mastery rate at the middle school. Geometry, we had an increase of, of our passing rate to 46%. And a very nice increase in our Algebra II numbers, which in addition to it being a nice increase, our students enrolled is somewhat consistent. So, which has been, you know, which is nice. 257, 257 students are still going for that Algebra II Regents for their additional, their fourth credit in, in math. And 83% of them pass that exam, 14% of them receiving mastery. Yeah, Jeff? Yes, so the question is, is the nine-period day allowing opportunities to be able to better support students in math? Jeff, am I, is that, yeah. So we, in all of the subjects that culminate in, in a Regents' exam, we try to put in credit-bearing classes that would be able to support students in need. So not just AI, we do have some So not just AI, we do have some skills classes and lab classes going, but we have some other classes that are, are, for algebra in particular and, or in math, the concepts of algebra being presented in a more of a project based or real life application way to help students maybe better identify with the curriculum to support them through the Regents exam. So through a process with the curriculum coordinators and Steve Dumbo, they identified what students would be the most appropriate to go into those elective classes and schedule those students and where, where they could based on other needs and not taking them out of maybe some classes they also enjoy and thrive in while they may come to school. But, and then also making decisions about when to put them into math versus science versus social studies or an English support. So we definitely did that across the board and every subject area has some sort of support like that. The elective courses that we created in math, I forget, Amy, what exactly is it called in math? It's the, is it essentials? Investigations of, it's algebra investigations, geometry investigations, Algebra II investigations. Those courses are credit bearing. A skills class is not credit bearing or a lab class is not credit bearing. Those are academic interventions straight up. These other courses, because there are different content being presented in different ways, although helps support the skills students need for those exams, we're able to make those credit bearing classes. And we, again, have done that in every, every themes classes and global and in U.S. history, investigations classes and science. Yes? How do we identify which students would go into the investigations classes? Credit bearing classes. So we really were looking at an identification from the students that we were deemed to be struggling as far as really a 75 or below and teacher recommendation from the year before, or depending on, on where they are. So if they were struggling in algebra, perhaps then, you know, when they didn't do well on the, on the algebra regions, automatically would have gone into the investigations class. And it also had a lot to do too, quite honestly, with scheduling and where it could fit in based on what could be put in for all day classes and, and what worked in the student schedule without also killing some of the great elective programs that we're also trying to develop in the same way. And a lot of that work too was a big lift for Steve Dumbo and it's really Steve did most of that lifting this summer because some of that results did not, did not come in and those lists did not get finalized until the summer and then got revised again after summer school. So it was changing schedules throughout the summer and having conversations with, with kids and parents who were like, I don't want to take more math. I don't like math. And we were trying to explain why taking another credit bearing class in math to help them get through the Regents exam and get another math half credit under their belt would be advantageous for them to do as, in addition to supporting them through and that they'd be able to take other electives along the way. So right now, we're really in a lot of communication and advertising and making sure parents understand the why behind some of the classes we built. Yeah. Yeah, absolutely. So the data points from the, from whether it was their final exam or Regents exams were all shared with the teachers and along with the professional development, the professional period that we now have at the high school, the coordinators are working with the teachers and assessing where the children are at and what do they specifically should be working on based on how those students are grouped together. So for instance, maybe in the global history themes course, looking at, you know, is it writing? Is it a particular concept or time period that the students need to focus on to make sure they'll be successful in the Regents exam? Absolutely. Right. So it's the idea of really looking at who are the students that are in that room? What do they need and what can we build to best support them in a new and a unique way? At the same time, it's, it's a lot of work and that without the professional period built in there where the coordinators will have the time to work with the teachers and understanding that, that what data points should they be looking at and working together and deciding what should be offered in that class to both support and also get the students excited about that subject area at the same time, right? Because some of it is, you know, students who perhaps like me would say, I'm not good at math because I've never been good at math, but maybe if I saw math in a different way, might, help me overcome my own mental not good at math, hence why my data was wrong on that slide with 10% versus 16%, right? So I, I do have, I do have that data that of the kids who took, and I can send it home in the Friday, the Friday update. I didn't put it in this presentation. We had 280 students take Regents exams this summer at Bosse's and of that, only 28% of them actually passed the exams. And I have all that data that I'll send home to you this week of the breakdown of that. But they're not reflected in this, in this data point right here. This is just the students that took the exam in June after being taught by our teachers. But I can definitely share with you multiple data points. I can show you the, which exam students took this summer, the percentage of students that passed each of those exams, which students were enrolled in the review classes we offered, and of those students, which ones passed the exams. You know, Steve Dumbo provided that data for me, you know, and I can share that with you for sure. Yeah? Absolutely. So really, we were trying to identify as many of the students that we could to go into the credit bearing class, to be perfectly honest, because earning credit is a motivator. We definitely find when it comes to AIS at the high school in particular, that because it's not a credit bearing class, students often lose the enthusiasm, I want to call it, to be able to work hard in that, that class. But we do absolutely need to identify, for instance, the skills class in particular is often a class that is for ICT students that are classified students in the ICT setting to do pre-teaching and post-teaching based on what the teacher's observing in the class. However, one of the things that we've worked on very hard with our ICT students is that not one model works for every student and we need to make sure that we're looking through the, through the annual review process at what is the best placement for that child based on what their needs are. Some students need the pre-teaching and the, the reteaching when it comes to the ICT model. Some students are placed in ICT and classified that maybe just need the reorganization skills and the refocusing skills and don't need the pre-teaching, but may still need some, some skills, the investigation may be more appropriate. So again, that it comes down a lot to, through the annual review process, the, the teachers really coming to the table, knowing the data and knowing the students and making the appropriate recommendation in addition to what fits into the schedule. But we've had a lot of conversation on this idea of the lab classes versus the investigation classes and how do we offer that to, to motivate more students to go into the investigation? Because they were really going to try to personalize those classes based on who's in that room and what they need. That, I mean, not that our AIS classes aren't, but that's the work that we're doing really this year when we, we go to talk to you about year two of the nine period day. What are some things that we did this year that worked? And there are some great things we did this year that, that worked? And there are some things we did this year that did not work so well, that we did not think of some unintended consequences that we need to make some shifts for. And one of the things we're going to be looking at are the data points of those different classes and are they working and are, what do we need to do to adjust? Yeah. Then looking at our science data and definitely want to make sure we point out before we even delve into science, this was the last year of these old exams. As Jill presented to you in the spring, we are in a whole new batch of, of curriculum, whole new batch of courses, and we made the decision, and you'll see based on some of this data, let's just rip the Band-Aid off and go right into the new assessment. So this June will be the first time that our teachers will be giving the new, the new science assessment with some excitement and some nervousness mixed in together because we don't know exactly what it's going to look like. But Jill's been doing a lot of great professional development and work with our teachers. So in looking at this, our living environment numbers, you'll see here, high school living environment, we had 58% of our students pass that exam in, in June. And of our eighth grade living environment, we had 88% of our students passing that exam. And then, oops, earth science. Absolutely. Sure. Sure. Yes. Right. So for, yes, you would take the 284 from the high school and the 112 from the eighth grade to see our total number of students that, that took the assessment for the 2024 school year. But I want to show you the two breakdowns because of our accelerated program at the middle. Earth science, chemistry and physics. You'll see here, earth science, we had 57% passing, chemistry 65%. And our physics number went up as well as our mastery number in physics to 81% of our students passing the exam with 35% mastery. Then we have our global and U.S. history. Global 79%, U.S. history 83%. We do see a hand in hand here with our E and L numbers when it comes to the U.S. history number and our ELA passing rate. You'll see they're very similar and we are breaking out that in fact, our E and L students perhaps, again, looking at some creative scheduling for them, again, just because they're cohort wise or juniors may be jumping in as a new immigrant to our country into U.S. history and then expect to pass to U.S. history regions at the end of the year may not be the best choice when we have some options to, again, get their legs under them and spend some time learning language, learning our, our new system, learning before we put them in U.S. history to, and expect them to pass. The next set of data points I want to point out to you are looking at our five-year comparison as reported back to us from New York State. This is looking at all students who took the exams, August, January and June. So for instance, if a student failed the exam in June, then took it again in August and failed in August, then took it again in January and failed again in January, their failure would be in here three times as a part of our percentage. This data source is coming from our, you know, as I have here, from our reports to the state. This is the first time I'm actually reporting it back to you from the state reports. In the past, I've polled it from e-school and realized that at times there's discrepancy perhaps in what, in the end, once all of the exams are up to the state and what the state is reporting out in comparison to what I'm pulling out of e-school. And I felt it was more important, most important to show you the accurate thing that will be in Newsday and be on our state, New York State report card as the most accurate data point. So you'll, you'll see that this is perhaps at times we've had a little discrepancy in, in the data when we pull straight from e-school. All right. So in looking at our five-year comparison, so all of these numbers up here have been adjusted based on what we have, the state is reporting back to us based on what we've reported to them. This will be showing you our ELA regions over the last five years and how our students performed. But I also want to make sure that, I also note that in 2020, we had no Regents exam. And in 2021, the Regents exam was optional. So you'll notice that those two, the Regents exams are not a part of this data set because if you remember, when the Regents exam was optional, very few students came that year to take the Regents exam. So it kind of offsets the data. This is full cohorted data. And in the 2022 school year, if you remember, the U.S. history regions was canceled. That's why it's NA. This is Algebra G O and Algebra II over the last five years. And, and one of the data points that I, I do want to point out is that we're looking at this as we are pretty close to our pre-COVID percentages. So we're looking at, all right, the learning loss, where kids were at, we can realign, readjust and say, all right, we're going to go only, we should only be going up from here. Or at least that's what we're challenging ourselves with, right? It's only up from here. This will show you our living environment, earth science, chemistry and physics. And again, to your point before Heather, these numbers are reporting eighth and ninth grade together and, and in addition to all the, the repeaters. This is the total districts passing rates over the last five years on these exams. Any questions about the five-year comparisons? Sure? So to, to my point here in the beginning where I talked about the data source and where I'm pulling the data from now, previously when we've done these presentations, we've pulled the data out of our e-school system as our unverified data. What I thought was more important moving forward was showing you what was the verified data from the state of what the state is reporting we have. So in pulling that previously out of e-school, we noticed that perhaps not all of the, it's when a student repeated an exam, the highest grade of that exam was the one that was pulling out of e-school, not all of the times that they took the exam. But when the state is reporting it back to us, if a student took that exam three times in that year, every time they took that exam, their exam score was reported as part of that percentage. So the state report coming back to us is different than what we were able to pull out of e-school. And so we have, so what we noticed was in particular with science, was that we had more repeaters in the science throughout the, throughout the year that were failing multiple times. Correct. Yep. Yeah. So, so this. I wouldn't necessarily say that. I wouldn't, I would say that what we were reporting to you was the, the highest grade of a student as it was reported out of e-school. And like I said, that's not what the state is putting on our school report card. So wanted to make sure you, this is really the most accurate data point. So when sitting and reflecting on it and talking to Ken, I said, yeah, I want to make sure that you are seeing what the community is seeing as our passing rates. And I don't want it to seem as if I'm somehow inflating or hiding because our, like I said, e-school would only be showing me the, the last or the highest grade a student got in the reporting, which isn't necessarily what the state is saying our passing rate is. So it's, so I went, I went back into each of these years to the state's report and pulled out the data from that. And that's why if you look at previous presentations, the percentage that may have been presented to you previously in previous years would have been different is because, again, we pulled that out of e-school. And I want to make sure if we're going to pull from one data source, let's pull all the five years from that, from that data source and show you the full picture. And this is how we're going to do it moving forward. Off the top of my head, I couldn't tell you specifically physics if we had a 91% passing. Yeah, absolutely. And, and we had recognized that in very early on, that 2023 was a bad year for us for physics. For, there was a multitude of reasons why, it may be some staffing, weaker cohort, and we made some adjustments and changes for the 2024 school year when Jill very quickly looked at that and said, that should not be based on our historic data as well. Science and math in particular were the two that I saw that were definitely some data differences where I was like, whoa, wait, what? And that made me dig deeper to look to see, and that's when I found out in e-school, that, that e-school would, would only report a student once when pulling that report, but the state's reporting them every single time they take the assessment. So the 2024 state report card is not out yet for me to be able to, to give you that. I will tell you that in looking at our scores in, from previous years in comparison to the state, most of the areas were pretty in line with the state. For the county, we are below in most of these areas, not in physics, especially from 18, 19 or, or 23 we were. But, but in, in math, county wise and in social studies and English, we were below the county. But again, the New York State report card reporting on that won't be out for the 2024 school year until the spring. And I can share that with you in a board update in the spring when that comes out. Correct. So the number of tests is, so if a child is taking, like I said, if they took the test in June and failed, took the test in August and failed, and took the test in January and failed, all three of those exams go into that rate where we were only pulling it once. And it was the highest score. it once. And it was the highest score. So, or a student could have failed it in June, failed it in August, and passed it in January, all three of those exams were also reported. So those two failures would negate that passing grade. All right. So in looking at then, not only our Regents results, but looking at the nine-period day and just our staff in general, each of our coordinators have worked to identify where at the secondary they're going to be focusing their work. I'm not going to read all these words to you, but you'll see what our coordinators are working on this year with their teachers to improve student achievement and enhancing our programs. You'll notice a lot in here on focusing on the nine-period day and developing new programs, new courses. You know, as we get into, and I know we're going to be presenting to you in a couple of weeks, where are we with the nine-period day? And if you remember, we built a lot of electives with this is year one, and then we need to build a year two and a year three. So you'll see that especially when you're looking at the digital arts, TV, film, cosmetology, family consumer science, technology in particular, that those areas are looking at how to build out their programs. But you'll see a lot in here as well as writing and reading across content areas. That's the main focus at the middle school across the board. And you'll see in particular, again, in science, a lot of the science storylining and aligning to the next-gen standards with the new assessments, and a lot of work in a lot of different areas that at the high school we're doing, and the professional learning, professional period, and at the middle school and department meetings in ninth period as well. All right. So then looking at the class of 2024 to kind of give you some graduation data, we had a ninety-one percent graduation rate for the class of 2024. Of that, fifty-four percent of our students received a Regents diploma or higher, fifty-four percent received a Regents diploma, forty-five percent received a Regents diploma with advanced designation, five percent of our students received a Regents diploma with advanced designation and honors, and two percent of our students received a Regents diploma with honors. And I have the delineation there of each of them. Just know usually when it comes with honors means that they got a nine year above in all the Regents exams that are required for that particular designation. Also, very proud of the work the social studies department's been doing where thirty-one percent of the senior class left with the seal of civic readiness, and four-point-four percent of the class left with the seal of bi-literacy. And that Elliott is doing with the social studies department, we think we'll probably be seeing that seal of civic readiness number going up over the years as more and more kids are bailing themselves of that opportunity, and which is very much in line with anything you're seeing out of the state with the changing in graduation requirements in the portrait of a graduate, that seal of civic readiness completely falls in line with that. And really neat with the seal of bi-literacy, last year, we had a student receive the seal in Chinese. So not just the languages we're offering, but again, going back to the original slide where we had twenty-four different languages being spoken in our district, that students are finding the opportunity to use their own heritage and background to be able to get themselves that seal. Yeah. Yeah. So, you know, we really work hard in the spring, our teachers, with the guidance counselors and administration to make sure that we're making solid recommendations. And students can change, and Steve Dumbo yelled at me along the way if I'm misspeaking on this, throughout the spring to be able to make decisions about where they are as far as AP and honors is concerned. However, once they're enrolled in the class and September comes around, it is a little more of a challenge to move because at that point, we're saying, you knew what, you were recommended, the teacher felt that you, or teachers felt you were prepared to go on to that next level, you had an interest in it, your parents saw the schedule, this is something you wanted, so why now do you want to move out of this? And so it's not just a simple phone call of, I want to change. We really try to spend some time in drilling down, like, what's going on? Why aren't you taking the most rigorous course load that's appropriate for you? So you'll notice that a parent will call and speak to a guidance counselor. Counselor will try to counsel, you know, a parent as to, what's the reason why? From there, it may go to Steve for a conversation. It could be, you know, perhaps that life circumstance or some mental health issue. If it's academic, one of the curriculum people would get involved to have some more conversation with the parent and the student and the teacher, again, to figure out the why. A lot of times, what we find is that students in the first week of school want to suddenly drop all these classes because it seems very overwhelming because it may be the first time they're taking an AP, but they're appropriately matching that class. And so, again, we may be having conversation with a teacher and say, hey, whatever you did with that assignment freaked your kids out. What's going on? And let's see if we can cool it or, and to see if it's appropriate. A lot of times, the administrators are having conversations with the kid and the parents too about, what are your aspirations after you leave high school? So for instance, if you're somebody who wants to go into the medical field, do not suggest that you're going to now drop AP chemistry or drop your physics class because that is something that is going to make your transcript much more competitive with your peers to be able to get into that school. What is the reason why you want to drop? From there, it really then goes to Dr. Komp for a decision from there. It varies depending on the reasons why a student wants to drop. But, you know, I looked at the list, you know, recently with Mr. Dumbo of students that were still interested in coming up with a, and helping to brainstorm on a course of action of all of them. But I would say, it's safe to say, Mr. Dumbo, that like, when a parent emails or comes down or calls you within twenty-four hours, there's a response by a guidance counselor to acknowledge the parent request in most cases, to acknowledge it, not to necessarily make a decision and then continue to have conversation. It could be, it could be something that happens in a twenty-four-hour thing, because we unfortunately have had some kids who have had some pretty serious things happen to them, a few of them over the summer, where based on their life circumstances, we said, we need to maybe work on your mental health and making sure you're continuing to come to school, maybe need to make some adjustments. And as late as today, some decisions were made as follow-up meetings were had. But I know each of you, right, each of you have spent time on the phone with families, parents, meetings with kids and teachers over the course of the last few weeks, and gotten back to parents and students within twenty-four, forty-eight hours of their request made when it has been elevated to you. Yeah. So, but that doesn't always mean that the decision is favorable in the way in which the parent wants, but there's been ongoing conversation that's going. And again, when they're not happy at the decision made at this level, they refer them to Dr. Komp for a further decision because ultimately, this is building. And I can't speak to him about how fast he gets back. All right. So this slide here is showing you the last, again, the last five years of our graduation rate in advanced Regents diplomas. And again, when that says cohort, that's when they entered, right, when they entered the high school, when it says cohort year. All right. And then the class of 2024, we have three hundred and sixty-eight students in the class of 2024. Of that, sixty-three-point-eight percent of them went off to four-year schools, twenty-five percent went off to two-year schools, and eleven-point-two percent of them went off to vocational setting or employment or into the military, which I know is something that Mr. Dumbo works very closely with our students, especially those going, interested in pursuing military and helping them follow through on what they need to do or making sure they're prepared for that transition. Yes, Mr. Myers? That's a harder data point to pull. And if you've got some way that you're doing it where you're at? I haven't seen that for us. I do know, you know, we've tossed around different ways of how to survey students after they leave us and where they go. I will tell you, many of us attended a workshop over the last two days where we were looking at some of the data points of the number of students nationally that are staying in school. And I believe it was forty-three percent of them are receiving their bachelor's nationwide after six years. So there is definitely seeing nationwide a decrease in the number of students actually completing their bachelor's, but I could not speak specifically to North Babylon. And I did, Jeff, based on your question last year, did inquire Western Southern Bosse's, as you're saying, if we had that and we didn't. But I will inquire again, and maybe there's a cross-contract that we can do with Eastern, if Eastern has it, to see if that's something that I'll inquire about. But that data point, I haven't seen from them, but I'll inquire again. I'll inquire. I'm just picking on you, Crystal, using our contacts. Any other questions? Mr. Lichetti, there is a... So if you want to drop me an email, I'd be happy to, okay. Drop me an email, I'd be happy to answer anything you have, Mrs. Shad. Thank you. Seven questions. All right. We'll get back to you in twenty-four hours, I promise.
Nice job with the presentation, Ms. Killen. I want to just thank you as well. It's a lot of information. It's a full year's worth of data, or in some instances, even further back than a year's worth of data. So thank you for your, it's a lot of information. Thank you for your attention. Certainly thank you to the curriculum leadership team again.
Yes. So with that being said, we are going to need a motion to go to executive session to talk about personnel and some updates. Motion? Second? All in favor? All right. Thank you again. Thank you, Kim, for the presentation. Thank you, everyone, for being here. Have a wonderful evening. Stay safe.